February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and the time is seven oh three P M. Our mission is to provide a safe and caring climate and culture in which we engage, inspire, educate, prepare, and empower all learners in partnership with our surrounding community to be successful in today's and tomorrow's society.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And then, when you're ready, can you please call roll?
Following members are closer. There we go. Following members are present at the District Administration Office. Scott and Drayson. Natalie Copeland.
Here.
L. Dolgren.
Here.
Zach Doralt is here. Shannon Haas.
Here.
Monica Segarra-Swartz.
Here.
Heather Weems.
Here.
All right. The following cabinet members and staff are present at the District Administration Office. Superintendent Dr. Lori Putnam, Assistant Superintendent of Secretary Educ- of Secondary Education Kay Nelson, Assistant Superintendent of Elementary Education Dr. Mike Rivard, Executive Director of Operations Gary Ganji, Director of Innovation and Instructional Technology Ryan Cox, Director of Equity Services Ian Omar, Director of Community Engagement and Communications Tammy Deland, Media Technicians Paul Novak and Gordy Scott, Custodian Site is Steve Hain. The following cabinet members and staff are virtually present. Good thing I was at the eye doctor today. Executive Director of Community Education Adam Home, Executive Director of Finance and Business Services Amy Scalabrute, Executive Director of Human Resources and Labor Relations Tracy Flynn Bowe, Executive Director of Research, Assessments, and Enrollment Donna Roper, and Executive Assistant Jan McQuire.
Thank you. Then I'm looking for approval of tonight's Board of Education meeting agenda.
Move.
And do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion by Scott, a second by Natalie. Zach, can you please call vote?
Shannon Haas.
Yes.
Monica Segarra-Swartz. Heather Weems.
Yes.
Scott and Drayson.
Yes.
Natalie Copeland.
Yes.
L. Dolgren.
Yes.
Zach Doralt is a yes.
Next is a consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of non-controversial items that the board adopts routinely without debate. Any single member may remove an item from the consent agenda by requesting removal at the time the consent agenda is moved for adoption. On tonight's consent agenda, Item A: Approval of minutes from January third, January fourth, and January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-three meetings. Item B: Approval of bills and other financial transactions in the grand total amount of three million, two hundred thousand, five hundred and nineteen dollars and thirteen cents. Item C: Approval of personnel staff changes. Item D: Acceptance of grant awards and donations. Item E: Approved Board Policy two ninety-nine. Legal counsel, no suggested changes. Third reading. Item F: Discovery HVAC project change orders totaling two hun- is that probably a comma? Two hundred and do we think that's a comma? Not a period?
I'll second that.
Two hundred and ninety-seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-four dollars would make more sense. And Item G: Oak Hill HVAC Project Change Orders totaling three hundred and twenty-one thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Move. Second.
Have a motion by Scott, a second by Monica. Zach, can you please call vote again?
Monica Segarra-Swartz.
Yes.
Heather Weems.
Yes.
Scott and Drayson.
Yes.
Natalie Copeland.
Yes.
L. Dolgren.
Yes.
Zach Doralt is a yes. Shannon Haas.
Yes. All right. Thank you. Then moving on to informational items. First up, we have the Clearview Elementary School presentation. Glad to have you. We have Principal Meredith Voucher and two of her, we have a kindergarten teacher, Marita Schmitz, and academic coach, Irene Wilcox.
Good evening, Chair Haas, Putnam, and members of the board. As shared, my name is Meredith Voucher, and I have the privilege of doing a job I love every single day as the principal of Clearview Elementary. And I have with me Marita Schmitz, who is one of our kindergarten Spanish immersion teachers, and Irene Wilcox, who is our academic coach. And we are very excited to share with you tonight all of the great things that are happening at Clearview Elementary. We will each be sharing a focus area of our continuous improvement plan or what we have deemed our school focus plan. It is what drives what we do every day in terms of student achievement, academic, social, emotional, and climate as a whole. So Ms. Marita Schmitz will get us started.
Hello, I'm Marita Schmitz, and I am a Spanish immersion kindergarten teacher at Clearview, and I also serve on our school's PBIS committee. So we're going to take a look at our first focus area, which is promoting positive climate and culture at Clearview. This year, our focus objectives are working towards integrating social, emotional learning and supports, and expanding opportunities for student and staff voice. So as you can see on the slide, there are a number of initiatives and programs that our school is utilizing to promote positive climate and culture. I'm going to be highlighting a few of these over the next few slides in further detail. So one of the ways that we're working on promoting positive climate and culture is having monthly PBIS, staff and student recognition. So to promote a collaborative professional community, our school encourages staff members each day to look out for the positive things that other staff members are doing in the building, and then they're encouraged to write that down on brag tags, which are posted in our staff lounge and published in our staff bulletin. And so among the recipients of a brag tag, they're awarded an orange frog award. As you can see, one of our teachers is hugging the little orange frog, and those recipients represent staff members who are making a positive impact in our school community. Teachers who are and staff who receive this award have their name announced on our morning announcements. They get to receive a little prize from our PBIS cart. They have their news of their award posted on our school's social media account as well. So that is some of the ways we recognize our staff. And then for students, we have Student of the Month for our school, and we do it a little differently because we have students recognized for a positive student trait that they show each month. So some of those examples might be imagination, communication, and problem solving. During the planning process, our PBIS team wanted to make sure to include diverse traits that represent qualities that our students share with our learning community. In broadening the scope to include diverse work habits, academic skills, as well as social, emotional skills, we include students of diverse talent, ability, and personality. When students win, they get to go to a special breakfast in our cafeteria, and they are celebrated with a certificate. And from the kindergarten perspective, a real big hit is Cody the Cougar makes his appearance, and everybody is really excited about that. The kids who win have a special spring in their step and a big smile for the rest of the day. A next area that we are working on is the implementation of a safe space in every classroom. The safe space is a physical location in every classroom that provides students an area to calm down. There is a little box of tools that they can use, like litter jars, stuffed animals, things to help them identify their feelings and self-regulate so they can return to learning with a calm mind and body. The safe space not only is an essential tool that we utilize in our classroom, but it uplifts the ideal we share as a school that our classroom doors are open to the whole child with the unique perspectives and experience they bring to the school each day. We believe that the lessons that we teach in the safe space will transfer to their daily lives, and that they will learn to understand their feelings better and navigate the world around them. So with our training that we are continuing to learn in conscious discipline, which we also utilize for integrating our safe spaces, we are also using our morning meetings, so a time that we come together in the morning to greet everybody. We are utilizing strategies from Brain Smart Start to help students be ready for the day. The students build connections. We foster a sense of safety, and the students do activities that release endorphins that prepare their mind for learning. So what a Brain Smart Start looks like in the morning is we call everybody to the rug. We smile and acknowledge that everybody is there. We do an activity to unite, like a classroom song, or a greeting, or a handshake. Then we move on to an activity to connect. This is a time where we take some time to laugh, to see our friends, to play a game, to do an activity, to get our bodies moving, to make some eye contact, and to just establish our relationships for the day. We move on to an activity to commit, and so we think about how we want to start our day, and we make goals independently and collectively as a class. We also have a really nice ritual that we do as a class. We have a heart, and we have pictures of all of the students in our class. And so any student that is absent that day, we move on to the heart, and we acknowledge that they're not there, and we think of them as a class, and we wish everybody in our class, in our school community, and everybody who is away from school a wonderful day. It's a really important ritual that we have because when our students come back to our classroom and join us, are join our school commu- our school family, they look right away to the heart, and they and they say things like, "You noticed I was gone." And so they're happy that even when they're at school, they know that their teachers and their classmates are thinking of them. Then to finish our morning meetings, we do an activity to disengage stress. We do breathing activities, body scans, positive affirmations, and so we get our brain ready for learning. We believe by doing our Brain Smart Starts that we're getting students ready for learning for the day by preparing their mind for learning and establishing those connections that will help them to that will carry over into all of their learning for the rest of the day.
Hello, my name is Irene Wilcox, and I am the academic coach at Clearwater Elementary, and I can speak to you a little bit about focus area two. And this is about instruction that produces positive outcomes. And one of our objectives was to maintain a systematic process to analyze all student needs based on data. One way that we worked to accomplish this goal was to have professional development with our staff around the science of reading. This is something that Dr. Putnam and her team will be speaking to you a little bit about in the next few months. But in our sessions, we spoke with staff about the research on how the brain learns to read, the different developmental stages of reading, and all of the different knowledge and skills that are key and important in being a proficient reader. This then set the stage for our winter teacher talks, and these were forty-minute one-on-one conferences with myself, Ms. Voucher, and teachers, and we looked over their winter benchmark data in reading and kind of did a little bit of analyzing that data, looking for celebrations where we saw student growth and achievement, and then also spent time problem-solving students that might be struggling, and tried to walk away with a plan of action of how they can help them in their classroom. The feedback from teachers on the PD, as well as the teacher talks, were very positive, and the majority, if not all of our staff, walked away saying that they felt that they had tools that they could then apply in the classroom to help their students. Our third area of focus was our family and community engagement, and thinking about how we can reengage families after COVID, how we can invite the community back in. And so this was an area that our leadership team really collaborated collaborated strongly on about how we reengage in school. And so one of the ways that we do that is in conjunction with our PBIS team, we send monthly celebration postcards. So we start our staff meetings each month, and every staff member sends two postcards to students, one to their Student of the Month, and then one to another student that they just want to celebrate. And they write that postcard out at that staff meeting, and we put a label on it so that we know that as the year goes on, every student gets to go to their mailbox at home and open that mailbox and pull out that really fun postcard. And then the families hang that, I know I have one on my refrigerator at home, and so it's a way to kind of surprise them and celebrate all the hard work that they are doing. In addition to the two student postcards, they send one staff postcard. So as a staff member, we again focus on celebrating all that we do every day, and going to your mailbox and pulling out that postcard and reading that is validating and affirming for our staff as well. So that's how we start our staff meetings. It's a really fun way to center ourselves in the great work that we are doing and share those celebrations with families. In terms of community and family engagement, we set the goal of doing something every month as the school year goes on. And so we kicked off September with a family learning night where we invited families into school to learn all about the great things we were going to be doing. In October, our second graders partnered with the YMCA, and every one of our second graders got to go have a water experience. And that was really fun to watch them leave on that first morning with a wondering of what was going to happen. They had this cinch bag with a swimsuit in it and all their supplies. And then to watch them return to Clearview and just want so badly to tell someone all about the great experience that they had, learning how to swim and being comfortable in water. So they went for three consecutive days to the YMCA and then had that opportunity to learn how to swim. In November, we had our, we brought back the Clearview Veterans Program. So this is a partnership with the local VFWs and our local Cub Scouts and our local Girl Scouts. And it was about a half-hour program, and there were points in the program where I had to look away because our veterans were crying. Our kindergarteners were beaming with joy as they sang songs to our veterans. We read poems, we sang songs, and the veterans left there really thankful for the opportunity to be back in school, to be back with kids. It was a very moving time. That was really fun for us. And then in December, we celebrated the end of our first trimester with a PBIS bingo celebration. So if you can imagine, eighty kindergarteners all in our cafeteria with bingo cards is a great challenge. And so we opened it up to our families to come in, and that was really fun. We had families signing up for that first slot with kindergarteners who really just stayed with us that whole morning as the morning went on. And we were able to bring in enough parents and volunteers so that every kindergartner had an adult within eye shot. So when G sixty-two was called, there was somebody there to help that little five-year-old find G sixty-two. And it was really fun to watch them scream bingo as as they won that opportunity. And then we partnered with Raising Canes here in St. Cloud. They've provided us with five hundred student certificates for student meals, and our students earn those by completing our reading support program of Lexia. So as a student levels up in Lexia, they get a certificate, they get their name read on announcements every Monday morning, and as they level out of their grade level. So as a first grader completes all the first grade Lexia and moves into second grade Lexia, they get that certificate to take home in recognition of their hard work. And just this week, looking at that data of our students' meeting usage, we have about seventy-six percent of our students at or above grade level in Lexia. So that's really an exciting way to celebrate their success and their hard work, and it's really motivating for the students. I print those certificates on Friday, and last Tuesday, I had a student pop into my office, and he said, "I leveled up yesterday, and you haven't read my name yet." And I said, "I will. Next Monday, I promise." And so that was really fun to see them be proud of their work. And as I walked through the halls, I noticed that some students hang those certificates on their lockers as a way to show their hard work. So those are some of the ways that we worked really hard to reengage families and our community and to celebrate all that we are doing.
So my entire family is in the education field, and so I kind of wanted to be anything but a teacher. But I worked at a lot of camps growing up, and so working with kids, seeing how inspired they were when they would learn how to create a bracelet or something, just seeing that spark. This year, I have a pretty small class. Try to engage with, love coming to third grade as much as possible. I really like to do fun and engaging lessons and activities, whether it's bringing in art, or music, or a song that can tie to something, just so that the students can see that what we're learning about in school ties to their everyday life. They can become inspired, bringing in types of learning as possible, all the different multiple intelligences. So this year is kind of a new year for us. Every grade is trying to do something to get parents involved. My students are going to publish a book, and having parents come in, and they can read aloud their published book and have cookies and treats and everything. We will have bingo night where parents can come in and volunteer and do bingo with the students so they enjoy coming into school again. Last year, I had a split class of fourth and fifth graders. They actually were super inspired, and they were super excited to help one another. My fifth graders would help my fourth graders with something that was review for them, but the fourth graders were just so intrigued by like one of the older kids helping them. My fourth graders would then, if there was something the fifth graders haven't done in a while, and they needed a review, then they would get to teach them. Just seeing like how excited they were, and they would act like teachers. You could see they would use like my same language that I use in class. And a couple of them after last year were like, "I can't wait to be a teacher, so I can do this every day."
So I took a very roundabout way here. I went to school for criminal justice, and then I worked in probation. And I figured that a school would be an excellent opportunity for me to see the proactive side of a kid's life. So what gets done here really was interesting to me. I saw that this job was available in the city that I'm from, and I thought, "Why not? Let's try it." My day is definitely different every single day. Within a day, I'm in and out of just about every classroom, and they can have the opportunity to or use the materials that we have in here to reset, re-regulate, and get them back to class. And this year, we have safe spaces in all the classrooms. They can self-regulate in that space. It's helped because it doesn't break up that schedule as much. The self-regulation skills were really important to learn last year. Is that a big problem or a small problem? And they've started to be able to identify like, "Oh, small problem, but I had a big reaction." I actually get the privilege of seeing the inspiration go both ways. Whether it's a kid inspiring me after they've had a bit of a tough day, they can really use the skills that they have learned to turn themselves around. I have to work to create that positive environment for them to come, and I want to continue that throughout the day. That's what I'm going to do, to try to return the favor and inspire them to be the best that they can be. I think we've come together in a lot of ways. I was actually new last year, so I experienced it right away with the welcoming staff. The kids were excited to get to know a new person. Everyone that I've encountered has been super helpful to me, and we've been able to create a fun environment here with staff. We all kind of know each other and have that camaraderie, which has been really fun for me working in my first school. Seven forty-two together. Seven forty-two together.
Thank you for letting us share. We'd be happy to answer any questions you might have for us.
Thank you. Monica?
Thank you for coming. Muchas gracias. This is so exciting. So I am very intrigued by the safe spaces part. So I want to hear more a little bit more about how you come up with the idea. I love what you were saying about how you're describing that kids say that if it's a big problem or not. So how is it working in like in real life? Like, if you can give us an example, or that I'd like to hear a little bit more.
So the safe space is part of the conscious discipline program with the idea that we teach children when they face upset, or what we describes as a shucks bummer and oops in their day, that they can take the time that they need to be ready to learn again. And our goal is that we teach students that that can happen in their classroom, that I don't have to leave my classroom to do that. I can do that right there in my classroom, and then when I'm ready, I get back to learning. And we know as adults that even when they're in that safe place, they're still listening to what's going on in the classroom. So it keeps them being part of their community and not somebody that has to go out to fix an oops that might have happened as they work through their social, emotional brain state. So it is part of the conscious discipline program that we dug into this year.
So do they choose to go there? They do it by themselves?
Yep. And we worked very closely with Carl Burke. He's come in, he has modeled in our classrooms how to teach the use of that space to students. There are books that go along with that program about a character named Schubert, and so Schubert teaches you how to use that space as well. And that partnership with with Carl has been really important or implementing thus in the success of the program.
I just wanted to add from the classroom perspective that our safe space gets used a lot throughout, and they can see the instruction there, but it's like a kid misses mom, and they feel sad, and they'll go over there. I think the other thing that's helpful is I think that it gives the kids the language to help understand how others might be feeling. Like, I've had kids get sad in the classroom, or like start to cry. Another friend might like bring them the glitter bottle or something, or be like, "Can we help you with, you know, how you're feeling?" And I think it's been a really great tool. It gets used appropriately and often by the students in our classroom. I think another thing that's really nice is that they're in all of the spaces that our kids learn, and so it's kind of grounding for them, too. It's like, I have kids that will go into new classroom and be like, "There's the safe space," so they know that that spot is available for them should they need it during the school day.
What happens if there are sort of kids that want to use a safe space?
So that's part of the lesson that our teachers teach at the beginning of the year about, you know, I'm not going to spend all day there. I'm not going to spend a big chunk of my time there, and how we share that space. And it's really fun when the teachers are modeling it. They will put themselves in the safe space at the beginning of the year just to model for kids that we as adults have emotions that we work through all the time, and sometimes we just need a minute to regroup and collect ourselves, which is a really fun thing. That's usually when you hear the giggles from the students of my teachers using that safe space. I have one in my office. We have one in every physical space in our building, with the exception of our cafeteria, because we have different ways to spread them out there. But all of our physical spaces have one.
We have them in other schools? Thank you. I do have another question about, this is for Donna. What is what is in the statistics and looking at the numbers? Was CTSR that that we cannot report on those because we have too little, or because we don't have?
Yes, good question, Monica. That stands for counts too small to report.
So when it's zero percent means that we did have, because I'm confused about the difference between those and the zeros.
Zero means there were none.
Okay.
And the counts too small means that it has some.
Yeah, okay. All right. Thank you. So the other question that I have that I'm not sure if it's appropriate for this team is about the the your perspective in how you teach Spanish compared to what's going to happen in our in our multilingual program that is coming up, and have they been involved?
So we're starting to take a look at what that will look like for next year, and so we're really excited to take a look more at the research that there is as we look from an instructional standpoint. I have an incoming kindergartner, and as a kindergarten teacher, I'm really excited that she will get the opportunity to not only start off learning Spanish, but that she'll be able to form connections between the two languages. So we see that while students have the capacity to learn a new language, building those connections between previous knowledge that they have, or, you know, between previous knowledge that they have, or, you know, building deeper into Spanish if they're coming in as that as their first language as well. It's beneficial for all that are going to be in the language program to be able to start building the connections between the two languages. How that looks like exactly, we're still figuring out that with the knowledge that we have, the research that we're looking at. But I feel like, as a parent of an incoming kindergartner and as a kindergarten teacher, I'm excited to see how that will open opportunities for our students in the incoming school year. I'm also really proud to be part of this district that we've made it a priority to expand the program to more students. Learning a language is such a gift. Learning the skills associated with a language you already know and learning how to write it is just amazing as well for students who already come in knowing Spanish. So I'm really proud to work for this district and that you've made it a priority to expand the program, too.
Hal?
Take off on a totally different path. You guys had a lot of construction done last summer. How's it working out? What do you like about it? What don't you like about it? What did we do well? What didn't we do well?
You did everything amazingly well. We feel very secure. So that, that construction of a secure entrance has given us a focal. People know where to go to when they come to our building. They're greeted by warm and welcoming staff. The kids, as you saw in the video, dancing down the hallway. Ms. Sarah is a great dancer. They love the hallway. When the teachers first came back after the summer, they were like, there's blue splattered all over the hallway. But our students use it as hot lava. So when I have lots of extra energy, I can, I've tested, you can get around the whole building stepping only on blue squares. It does take a little bit of dexterity, especially for a five-year-old, but we can do it. So we have very much appreciated your dedication. Our parent drop-off, we reconfigured that area in the back, and it is beautifully smooth. We get families in and out of there. I was curious once, because we have quite a line by the time we get out there in the morning and then in the afternoon as well. And a family can go from the entrance to our parking lot, pick their child up, and be back out in less than three minutes. So it, it works beautifully. So we've appreciated your dedication to those improvements.
Thanks. And Scott, and then Natalie?
Okay. We use a lot of acronyms and abbreviations in our work. Sometimes our people online just, what are you talking about? So let's do something simple. Please tell us what is PBIS?
Yes, so PBIS is Positive Behavior Intervention System. So it's our schools committee that I, looks at the data of behavior that we have in our school, and we find out, find the ways that we can positively impact to reroute some of those behaviors and to provide the structure that students need to be successful in all settings in our school.
And I will add to that. It's even creating lessons to teach school-wide expectations. So what does it look like when I'm on the playground? How am I successful in the cafeteria? How do I move from one physical space to another? So we do videos at the beginning of the year, we do mini lessons. So it's really teaching students the expectations of school. And ClearView does a really good job. We've been an exemplar school for a long history and hope to be again this year. We really dedicate time into that teaching of what we want kids to do to be successful at school.
Okay, and one more. What's an EduClimer?
EduClimer is a program that we use. It's, it's, it's more than a data warehouse, and maybe Donna wants to jump in, but it's where we capture a broad picture of students. We can, at our meetings where we're problem-solving around students, at grade-level meetings, we can pull up EduClimer, pull up the student. We see academic data, we see attendance data, we see historical testing data. So it really is a platform that we use that gives us lots and lots of information about students.
Thank you. Onto other stuff. I like the safe space. Monica does, too. Some of the elementary schools, I think, have a safe room. I believe that Madison does. How does that work compared to having a safe space in a classroom?
To be honest, I'm not sure. Because I, you know, we know what we do, and that is to create that space inside of our classrooms with our goal to keep students inside that classroom. We do have a support room as well. And so if a student isn't able to regulate in the classroom, if they just need a higher level of support or a little more time, or a place to have a private conversation with a trusted adult, they can come out of their classroom and spend brief moments of time in that support room. And so I'm not sure if that's the same as what they do at Madison.
Sounds similar. I was impressed with your morning meetings. You were talking about the heart or something? Tell me about that.
Okay, so it's a ritual we do as a classroom family every day. So we have a picture of all of the students. So I have a magnetic teacher desk, and so it's all on there. And so we have all of the pictures of the students in the class, and I have a little heart that's on the side, and I know other classrooms do this as well. And if you're absent that day, we have, we move the picture of the students that are absent to the heart. And so then we do a ritual together of wishing them well, as well as our classroom and school community. And so, because we do it every day, the students always check to see if they were noticed that they weren't there. And the other students make sure to check in with them, too, when they come back.
And the goal of that ritual is to very clearly say to students, you matter. And we notice when you're not here, because you matter to our, our school family.
Okay. I was impressed with the partnerships that you have. I'm a member of the YMCA, I'm a former Boy Scout, and particularly this one with the YMCA, how'd you pull that off?
So we didn't pull that off. That was a district-wide initiative. Our second graders, I believe, and Dr. Putnam, correct me if I'm wrong, across the whole district, got to participate. It was part of a partnership grant with the YMCA. And Brianne Hearn did an amazing job of helping us get ready for that. But that was a partnership that was offered district-wide to all of our second graders that we very, very much hope is going to continue.
Thank you. And the scouting program? Is that involved? Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts? Tell me about that.
So Clear Lake Clear Water has a very strong scouting program. And so it's just those partnerships that have built across time. And so our Boy Scouts lead the colors in for our Veterans Program, which is one of the things that they do. We also partner with them on many of those projects that they do as they level up in scouting. I, sorry, I forget what it's called. But, you know, that's where our Veterans Monument out front, they help maintain that, they help maintain things in our forest. So it's just a commitment from our Clear Lake Clear Water area families.
I attended the Spanish Immersion Program over at Westwood, and they seem to have loved your model and have adopted your model of how to do things. I'm kind of wondering how it's going to impact your enrollment over time. Your enrollment's been fairly stable recently. Is it going to go up or down or sideways?
Based on numbers we're seeing right now, it's going to grow. I think it's a really great opportunity. I will share with you, I am a Westwood parent. My children, she's a senior this year, but they all went through Westwood. And we had the option of choosing the Spanish Immersion Program. And it, it wasn't a great fit for our family because of our location and the location of the program. So I think we are really being equitable in our access to all families who want this for their kids, but may not want their child on a bus for a long bus ride, or as a family that's very, very busy, that commitment in that travel alone. So I think it is a really equitable opportunity to open doors for lots of our families in District 742. I would have chosen it for my children if it had been at Westwood, and I don't think I'm alone. So I, our numbers right now are very stable coming into the Welcome Center and our enrollment. And what I'm hearing is Westwoods are wonderful as well.
Okay, so it hasn't, how many Northsiders do you have at ClearView? I mean.
I don't know the number off the top of my head, but I know that looking at our enrollment for next year, it hasn't slowed that enrollment. And we're enrolling families that kind of fit the attendance area of ClearView. And so our numbers right now are very strong.
I think that's it. Thank you. Good presentation.
Thank you for being here, and thank you to the teachers that joined your fearless leader. I loved hearing about the one-on-one volunteers for bingo. That's pretty impressive to have those, that turnout. And, you know, we just heard about Conscious Discipline last week and got a presentation on that, so to see how you live that on your classrooms was, was really powerful. Can you tell me a little bit more about winter teacher talks? I used to be a teacher, so that sounds scary, to me, honestly. Like, oh, now I'm the one that's a student. How do you, what's the workup to that? Kind of what happens in that meeting, and then what are your takeaways?
Yeah, so I'm actually new to this district as well. And so I guess my familiarity would have been like a data team. So every time we do our, you know, annual seasonal tests, we do in the fall, winter, spring, we've usually had some sort of meeting then that follows up either as a team or individually to look at that data and then guide instruction. And so the way that it was structured this year at ClearView, and I believe last year as well, it was to be more one-on-one. And I, we, we started the meeting with our norms and with the, you know, just, just letting them know that this is not evaluative in any shape or form. This is us coming together to celebrate, because we do see a lot of growth in our students, and we want teachers to be aware of that and be celebrating that. And then also to have that support just in the room, side by side of, okay, here's what we're seeing with, with these students, maybe that are struggling a little bit more. Let's dig deeper into where they're at in terms of their development of their reading skills, and try to find some resources and make a plan of how to support them in the classroom. So, yeah, I guess it sounds a little intimidating, but I think all of our teachers felt that it was helpful to, to be able to take the time in their day to look at it that way and then be supported in that way.
While our teachers were at teacher talks, their students were doing enrichment, technology, robotics. So the teachers also didn't have to provide a lesson plan to be out of their room, and we didn't use their prep. So we said to our media specialist, you get this group of children for 40 minutes, have fun, we're taking the teacher. And so the students loved those as well. They, they liked that their teacher got to go off and talk about them and celebrate their success. And the teacher didn't have to provide lesson plans or come back to a classroom that had been with a sub. So it was a really good way to provide an enriching opportunity for our students as well.
So I, just when Scott was asking about the heart thing, so I want to, do you know any impact that has that exercise having in attendance or not yet?
The heart ritual, the wish you well? I think, I don't know that we have data, but I can tell you that students notice that their classroom noticed when they were gone. You know, you get to put my picture back are some things that I've heard. I'm back, I can be part of the community again. And, and so I don't know if it's impacted our attendance. Our attendance is very strong. And we keep a pretty close eye on it. I don't know that it's impacted it, but I think it has impacted the students feeling like they belong to something and that they're missed when they're gone.
I just want to say thank you. Thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for answering all of these questions with such knowledge and poise. We really appreciate that Meredith, you invited parts of your team. Meredith is very much about community for those of you who don't know her, and she's living that, modeling that. You know, some of the feedback we got at one of our early, one of my early community conversations was families were saying, we wish we had more opportunities to be in right after COVID. And I think Meredith and her team have done one almost every month. I got to go to the bingo, which was amazing. There were so many people, though, I didn't really, you didn't really, you didn't need me to help. So it was, but it was, it was an amazing community. And then I think at your kindness day on Tuesday, there was an adult for every child, right? Is that accurate?
So it was our, part of our initiative that every grade level provides an opportunity to bring students in. So our kindergarten team went first and had a Valentine's Day, and it was really ingenious because all the candy left the building with those adults. So it was very wise on my kindergarten teacher's part. We had over 79 adults check in through our office that morning. And as I walked around to every classroom, there was one classroom where only two students were missing an adult. And so we put in a staff member adult, so that it literally was a one-on-one Valentine's Activity Day for every single one of our kindergartners. And I think the kindergartners were crying when mom or dad or grandma or auntie left, but the adults walking out of the building were very thankful, and they shared over and over how wonderful it was. And again, the candy left with the adults. So that was a really good way to celebrate that Valentine's Day, but then take that sugar with them as they left. Next is our second grade team, so I've thrown the challenge out to them because kindergarten kind of knocked it out of the park. And they are doing a St. Patrick's Day celebration, and then our first grade team will do a 120th Day celebration. So both of those are happening in March. And then as the video shared, our third grade team is doing an author or a book publishing party. Our fourth grade team will do a breakfast in books, where they're inviting people in in April. And then our fifth grade team is doing a vex robotics demonstration later this spring. So they all have very enriching ways to get our families back in those classrooms.
Thank you for sharing that. It's so clear how much care each of you takes for every single one of those kids, not just about this, you know, the making sure that they feel loved and seen and cared for, but also academically, that is evident in the practices that you implement. And so I just want to say thank you so very much for, for the way you care for our students and the way you make ClearView such a special community. Thank you.
Next up, we're going to have the LEAF Report. It's the Local Education and Activities Foundation. And we have some very familiar faces here. We have Executive Director Bruce Hentges and LEAF President Diane Moller. Welcome.
Hassan? No? Okay. Thank you. Chair Haas, Superintendent Putnam, and board members and administrators who are in attendance this evening. You probably do recognize these two faces from years gone by. And I think everybody knows Diane Moller and her role in District 742. And I'm Bruce Hentges, former teacher and administrator, Executive Director of LEAF. And beginning on Monday, Diane has taken over as President of the LEAF Board of Directors. And we're very happy with having someone of her expertise and experience and believe that we will continue to grow as an organization and our support for the great job that you're doing. It was exciting to listen to what's going on at ClearView and the many different initiatives that they have going. One of the things that struck me was 76% of the kids. One of the things that struck me was 76% of the kids reading at, at or above grade level certainly is a nice statistic to be able to, to share. And I think that it, it fits with what we're going to be talking about in that I think it shows a great deal of support for their school. And I think that what we can tell you as members of the LEAF Board of Directors is that the community as a whole supports District 742 and the job that you're doing. We just finished our most successful year of fundraising in our history with just under $500,000 donated to LEAF in support of the many programs that you have going right now in District 742. And if the market had been a little better, obviously it would have been even better for us, but it still allows us to continue to keep growing because of, of that support. We're here to share our annual report with you because we think it's important that you hear what LEAF is up to and that the community has the opportunity to hear. Several of you were with us on Monday when we did that kind of internal annual meeting at the country club and, and talked about the things that, that have been going on in 2022. Tonight's report will be very similar to what you heard on Monday, but we'll try to do it faster so we don't take up as much time, but to share what's going on in LEAF, both for you as the education community, but also for our overall community. And we have distributed a copy of our annual report to everybody. And I would also say that anybody who's watching, who would like to receive a copy of the annual report can certainly contact us through our webpage. One of the things that I mentioned on Monday is that someone with a critical eye who goes through this can find errors, I'm sure. And I want to apologize ahead of time for any errors that were made in putting this together. But when I, I am truly motivated by the tremendous support that this booklet shows, that this community is giving towards the public school system in, in many different ways. And, and it's a, a level of support that we want to continue to grow and, and to be there to help you as educators. And so to just get right into our annual report, I'll, I'll try to go through it rapidly and then take, Diane and I actually will be sharing this. She'll add anything that I miss as I'm talking and then we'll take a couple of the topics also. But, but starting with our, our cover, you'll notice that our first slide is the same as the cover of our, of our annual report. We do a best of 742 photo contest at, through LEAF. Anybody, any parent, any staff member, any student can submit photos to LEAF that they think show the best of 742. And then twice a year, we select one of those pictures that we think represents the best of 742. And the photographer receives either a $50 Shields card or Target card, gift card, and they get to choose a program that gets a $500 grant in their name. This particular photo was the second half of 2022 winner. And we think that it's a great picture in that it shows certainly the diversity of District 742, but through our activities, programs and the competitiveness and, and striving to be their best. It shows what can be accomplished when the focus is on excellence and not on differences. And the tech team sent us the picture with their big thank you sign there to the people that have supported them. We'll talk a little bit more about that maybe as we go. But just again, to quickly review, our mission is that we are an independent 501(c)(3). We support District 742, but we are an independent nonprofit organization whose purpose is to secure and channel private funds to support and enhance excellence and opportunity in a comprehensive District 742 public education program. And as we define comprehensive program, it means all academic activities, arts and athletics, as well as student support services, programs being run by District 742. A few of our highlights, I'm just going to very quickly go through. We surpassed the $2.65 million mark in terms of total grants that LEAF has been able to provide for District 742 since we began granting in the late 1990s. Our Adopt a Classroom program set a new record and on Monday night, I challenged anybody to show me that there's another education foundation in Minnesota that could exceed this in raising $44,245 for our Adopt a Classroom program where people can give $250. It goes to a particular classroom. They get to choose or, or they allow us to choose randomly from teachers that have applied for it. And that teacher gets that, those funds for classroom supplies. The check goes to the district. The teachers make their purchase through the district purchasing procedure, et cetera. But again, it shows a tremendous support of our teachers and we get great feedback from teachers in terms of the impact of that program and how much they support it. We've also received two $15,000 grants through United Way in 2022 that go to support the PAC-RAT and PAC-CAT program. And I know that you're familiar with those, not just the school year, but also the summertime read and roll bus, PAC-RAT and PAC-CAT program. We have a homeless student services fund and those funds were getting a little bit low. We ran a fundraiser last spring and we raised over $50,000 from the community members for us to help support students who are experiencing homelessness with either help for crisis shelter, food, clothing, or other things, including in some cases, phone cards, gas cards for transportation, et cetera. One of the things I'm very proud about is the LEAF Retired Educators Fund because I'm a retired educator, as is Diane. And we established that fund several years ago and retired educators can donate to LEAF and it stays in our endowed funds and allows us to give grants off of that amount. That amount now has grown by the end of last year to $92,880, which means in 2023, we'll give $4,634 in grants from funds that teachers retire, I should say retired educators, because it isn't just teachers, but any retired District 742 staff member has given. And that program will continue to grow each year and the ability to grant will grow. And then we've had four new legacy funds established, which provides specific support for either academics, activities, music, math, science, or EL programs in the future. And we'll just quickly review those as we get there. Just a, a quick slide here. Our, our total endowed funds as of the end of the year were $2,009,000. And you can see that our activities fund is $1,232 and our academic fund $776,000. What that means is that in 2023, we'll be able to give about $100,000 in grants just from our endowed funds. And another thing that I always say I'm very proud of is that actually our grants from our endowed funds only make up about one-third of the total grants that, that we give to District 742 during a particular year through the other various programs that we'll get to actually on this slide. This slide shows the various programs that LEAF supports. The grants above the line are the ones that come from the endowed fund, the spring and fall academic and activities funds. And then of course, the Adopt a Classroom program is highlighted, but we've got PAC-RAT, PAC-CAT, the Fund in Need Grants, which this year was not preschool expansion, by the way, I forgot to change that slide. It was for the elementary school music program. We raised $15,000 at the Learning Renaissance last fall and then received another $10,000 gift. So we're able to contribute $25,000 in support of the elementary music program this year. We have a homeless student services fund, the immersion fund grants that we're able to give, direct flow through where if somebody gives us a check and says, I wanted to go to this program, we are able to be the conduit for that gift to directly support a program. And some of those that you are see up there are examples of what happened this year. We have an activities participation fund that helps students who otherwise might be unable to participate because of socioeconomic issues to pay for physicals, to pay for equipment like tennis shoes or football shoes or those kinds of things through this fund. We do have several scholarship funds with LEAF, although that has not been a big part of our granting. You can see there were $7,000 in direct flow through from scholarships and then the Apollo and Tech golf scrambles. Those are the direct grants from those. They both have legacy funds. A year ago, I said that I think that LEAF had the largest endowment in Minnesota that is focused purely on program grants. And I challenged anybody to prove me wrong. This summer, we had a intern with LEAF, Sean Reagan. Some of you may know Sean. He's a graduate of Tech and he proved me wrong. We're actually, we're actually just the fourth largest endowed fund in the state of Minnesota that focuses on program grants. Winona, Orno, and Redwood Falls are ahead of us. Most of my focus had been looking at the interior Western suburban schools, thinking they would certainly have the biggest education foundations and, and funds, but they don't. And in fact, one of those that we modeled ourself after when we started is the Hopkins School District. And you can see in their case, they have a $650,000 endowed fund and are able to give $139,000 in program grants. They are focused on program. The biggest education foundation in Minnesota is South St. Paul with a $9 million endowment. But you can see where their funds are directed. They are directed to scholarships. And so while they gave 450 some thousand dollars, it went to 138 students, not to supporting the general program of the district. This is a graph just showing since we began making grants, where the $2,669,718 has gone to support basically the same programs that we just went through on the other slide, but this is over the years, the total amount that has gone to each of these. And we highlight PAC-RAT and PAC-CAT, which really have become marquee programs, I think, for LEAF to support, to encourage reading literacy in our preschool through grade three and math literacy in preschool and now a little bit of kindergarten in District 742. And the homeless student services fund. We receive gifts from hundreds of people in District 742. And every single gift that we receive makes a difference and we want to encourage all donors. We do have somebody who sends us $3 every other month. And it, we appreciate the, the gift and it goes into supporting education in District 742. We also though, are very fortunate to have had some very generous donors who have supported LEAF this year. And you can see the list up there. On this slide, I was only able to include everybody who gave $10,000 or more. In the book, in our annual report, it includes donors who have given $4,000 or more within the last year. But clearly these people are having a major impact on LEAF's ability to support what you are doing. One of the ways that people can contribute is by establishing a legacy fund with LEAF. A legacy fund is a fund of $25,000 or more, given over up to five years. And then the donor of that money works with LEAF to say, here's where I want the grant from, from my funds to go to. We began these legacy funds in our 15th year anniversary of 2008. Before that time, we had never received a gift of over $5,000 for our endowed funds. Since 2008, we began, when we began this, you can see we have, now have 16 legacy funds. And the slide shows the focus of each of those legacy funds in support again of education within our school district. I won't get into the specific ones, but just to comment about the, the homeless fund. Since 2015, we have worked with transitional services to support students who are experiencing homelessness. The model of our effort is homework is hard. Imagine how hard it is without a home. And, and it's really, when you stop and think about that, you realize the challenge that these kids are facing. And so that fund had gotten a little bit low. We decided in 2022, we needed to do a fundraiser and with the help of some challenge grants from Mark and Anne Thielen and Mike Podowitz and his wife Diana Murphy Podowitz and Peggy Carlson and Chuck Nielsen, making challenge grants, we were able to raise over $50,000 to replant each that fund and to carry us into this year, certainly through this year and into the next year. We currently have just under $32,000 remaining in the balance of our homeless student services fund.
I get to talk? Is it on?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So while we're sad that the St. Cloud All City marching band disbanded in the last couple of years, we're excited because their money had to get dispersed to another nonprofit organization because they were part of a gambling, they got gambling money. We've opted to put that into what we call the Music Matters Funds and I'm excited because of course I'm a music major. I know that we have an administrator here who's a music major. And when I was in 742, I worked with the music department. That was my assignment for the curriculum work. And I know how challenging it is to keep things in place and in tune, if you will. So this is a fund that we got, how much did we get?
Just under $80,000.
Yeah, okay. So that's the money we got that we can put into this fund and allow grants to occur every year. So we're forming a committee now, made up of, of course, LEAF members and 742, some music teachers from 742 to oversee a grant process that would allow them to get, I don't know what it would be. What's the percentage?
Five percent per year. Well, the, the, in addition to the Music Matters Fund, we have another very generous donor who has set up a legacy fund that will also go to support the music program. So we'll start with oh, between 105 and 110,000 in our Music Matters Fund. So that'll be well over $5,000 that we'll be able to grant each year, beginning this coming school year. And it will only grow over time as people make donations to the Music Matters Fund. We'll be able to impact that more and more.
And that's what we're hoping for, that that continues to grow so that we can continue to do the granting.
Okay. I mentioned the LEAF photo contest, just would share the, the, our last three winning photos are up there. Last year's booklet had that picture from Pam Stang's kindergarten classroom in, at Westwood. And the, the title of it was Raise Your Hand If You're Ready to Learn. And you see these kids with their hands up and, and ready to go. We already talked about this last one. The previous one was from Last Day of School and the title was The Final Hug Between a Music Teacher at Kennedy and, and one of her students. It just really, I think, shows, you know, the, the connection between our teachers and students. One of the interesting things that we have coming up is that two district administrators, Ayann Omar and Jesus Sandoval, contacted us a while back and said, hey, you know what? We would like to apply to be in Dancing with Our Stars and we would like any money that we raise to go towards the LEAF Student Activities Participation Fund so that particularly it would focus on encouraging participation by girls in the activities program. And again, whether it's physicals or buying equipment or heat jobs or whatever, to break down some of the barriers that there are for participation, that's where it will go. And the Women's Fund event is on June 12th out at the College of St. Benedict's. Many of you, I'm sure, have been there before and are aware of it. Our job from now until June is to help Ayann and Jesus raise as much money as we can so that that comes back to support the Activities Participation Fund. The winners of the dance contest are based on 60% on the amount that they fundraised prior to June 12th and then 40%. prior to June 12th, and then 40% on how good their dance is. Well, at the Night of the Stars the other night, they did a little demonstration of their dance. They're going to win the dance part of it. We've got to make sure that we win, that we support them and, and help them win the, the fund raised, because whoever wins it then gets an additional $15,000 through the community foundation that goes to their charity, and that would be to the LEAF Participation Fund. Monica, were you going to say something?
What are you going to do?
When am I going to dance?
Oh, she's back.
Oh, yes, 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 yes. Oh, I forgot. I didn't know that she was still here, but, oh, yes. Right. So, you know, and I do have to share this, this brief story about Ayann and Eric Stamp. About a week and a half ago, we had a donation sent to LEAF of $50. And that's not unusual, but it was from Carlton, Texas. And I thought, hmm, we get gifts from out of state, but usually I know what, kind of what the background of it is. I didn't know it, so I sent him an email. I said, Eric, how come you chose LEAF? You know, what is it here that, that you, that brought you to LEAF? And I didn't bring along the written notes that I had from Monday where I read the, the email that he sent, but his basic message was, in 2016, he heard Ayann on National Public Radio on an interview, and he thought, that really sounds like an interesting person. The next year, he quit his job and decided to go across the country via car and canoe. And, and, and going across the country, he contacted Ayann and was invited over to her house for dinner when he came through Minnesota. And it left an impression on him, and so then through social media, he had seen what she was committing to in terms of raising fund for LEAF, and decided that must be a worthwhile project. And so he sent us $50 through PayPal. So it's, it's a, it's a neat story, and I think there's so many messages that that gives, including how what we do to others or with others comes back to us someday. And I think it, it's a great start to that fundraising effort of our Dancing with Our The LEAF Night of the Stars. Several of you also saw the Night of the Stars last weekend, and it was, as always, it's a big project. It was held at Tech High School for the first time ever in their new auditorium. The, we certainly want to thank the directors, but most especially the students who took the time to prepare an act and to participate. You see the, the directors there, Denny Smith, Victoria Headkey, were kind of the lead directors, and Gary Zwach was our emcee. And Gary, of course, is a former band director at Tech, and told a lot of good jokes that kept the, the crowd entertained while we were having, getting things set up. I included in this just a few pictures from the, from the event. The upper-left one there is Denny Smith himself, who did an act, his welcome act at the start of the show. Denny is a, just a passionate performance artist and, and worked so hard with the kids. Kennedy Elementary had a act from their play, help me.
Lion King.
Lion King, yes, that was just tremendous. In fact, the ending of it put chills on people's back, and I had a number of people tell me put tears in their eyes. It was just so emotionally and well-done. The Apollo Jazz Band down the left corner, and then in the lower-right corner is the District 742 Secondary Choir, that Victoria Headkey and Kendra from Apollo, the Apollo Choir Director, put together for this, and, and they sang the last song of the evening. But it was another great show. The date for 2024 is February 23rd and 24th, and it is going to be back at the Paramount again. We just were able to find that out today, so put that on your calendars.
Why?
You know, performing at the Paramount is a big deal for kids because it's a, not just being a neutral venue, but being downtown, and, yeah, the directors and the kids were very interested in going back to the Paramount, and so we're able to do that. We had given up our spot at the Paramount because of COVID for two years, and so we couldn't get back there this year. The Tech Auditorium worked very well, but we'll be moving back to the Paramount again next year. Is it, I think it's the 23rd and 24th, Friday, Saturday, February of 2024.
Finally, what we really want to get out the word about is that our grant, our current grant round is happening right now. So spring grant applications, if administrators can tell their teachers, and teachers and coaches can kind of realize that within a week, the grant for this, the granting process will close. I serve on the grant committee, and I don't know if we want this public or not, but I'm going to tell you that the last time we had a grant round, we didn't give all the money out. So that just says to me, more applications need to come in, and I'm sure there's plenty of need out there. So if we can get the word out, that would be helpful. And again, it's academics and activities. This round, help me out, is...
It's focused on, the unrestricted grants are the activities this time, and that's the one where we had money left over last time, our grant funds left over. The...
And interestingly, the fall round begins in May. I mean, that's, you know, but they need, they need to get it in before they leave for the summer so that we can get the money to them in the fall. But to kind of keep the momentum for that going, and I know it's easy to put it on a back burner, I understand that, but let's just do what we can to get a lot of grants going. Grant committee won't like me saying that because we need them all.
And, and we had 50-some grants last fall, requests, and we were able to give the, our, we were able to give all of the activities grants, but the academic grants, we ran out of some funds in the end, there were more of those, but...
And even though that's disappointing for the staff, it's like where we want to be. We'd rather have that happen.
Then we left with money.
Yes.
Okay, so anybody interested can find out more at LEAF742.org. Our webpage contains really all of this information and more about the organization and how somebody can give to LEAF in support of the public schools in District 742. And that's it. Would take any questions.
Scott, and then Monica.
You had mentioned something called the Community Foundation.
Yes.
How does that work? I think you're mixed in there somehow, or other...
Yep, thanks, Scott. And that needs a little bit of an explanation. The Central Minnesota Community Foundation is a large, community-wide foundation. It has an office downtown, 101 Seventh Avenue South. We are fortunate to have our office in the Central Minnesota Community Foundation. We're upstairs there, and anybody is welcome to visit us at any time. Our endowed funds are invested through the Central Minnesota Community Foundation. We don't find a place to go and invest our money. We turn it over to them and let their experts invest it. And so the relationship between us and them is that we are a member of the Central Minnesota Community Foundation, and we also have an office in their building.
Thank you so much for all what you do. Really, 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 really appreciate it. I'm a little sad about not spending all the money last time. More money now, so yes, let's, let's, let's keep promoting it. So tell me about that photo contest. How, how did you do it? What, is it the first time?
Sure. No, we've been doing it now for a couple of years, and anybody, school board members or parents, or, or students themselves, or staff members, can just take pictures of things that are going on in District 742 that they think show a 742 in a positive light, the best of 742. Then they go to the LEAF webpage, and it's explained how to submit the photo for, to our PR committee, which judges the pictures at the end of each semester, or the judges the photos. And so if someone's photo is judged to be the best of the best of 742 for that half year, for that semester, they get a $50 gift card to either Shields or Target, and the program that they want to support receives a $500 grant from LEAF to support that program. So, and, and the galleries are up there, so anybody who wants to go look at what photos have been submitted, again, can just go to the LEAF webpage at www.leaf742.org.
Mostly, I feel like I'm your new BFF because this is the third time I saw you in the past couple of weeks. We've been with you for lots of fun. Good food and fellowship this Monday, and then today again, so thank you. I, my question was going to be how many teachers apply for classroom grants, but I heard you say 177. What percentage of teachers that apply are you able to fund?
Now, you're talking about the adopt-a-classroom grant.
Adopt-a-classroom, yes.
Right. So for the adopt-a-classroom grant, the Communications Department for the district sends out a brief survey in August, when teachers first come back and say, are you interested in getting a, an adopt-a-classroom grant? And then those teachers submit their, you might say, application or whatever. And we will usually have about, well, this year, I think there were 179 teachers who said, yes, we would like to be part of that. Then we start taking in the donations. If a, if a donor says, I want my $250 to go to this classroom, then it goes to that classroom, whether or not that teacher had applied. And they get to use it for classroom supplies anyway. And it's, it's probably about 60% of the people who donate to the adopt-a-classroom program say, choose randomly, and about 40% say, I wanted to go to this particular teacher. So then, if it's, if it's a random drawing, we have all of the names of the teachers, and we draw them out of the box in the LEAF office, and, and then they get a $250 grant if their name is drawn.
Okay. How many do, do you know a percentage of what you're, we're able to fund this year versus how many applied? You know, that 179?
179 applied. We gave 177 grants, but 60% of those about would have been teachers who applied.
Oh, 60% of the 179, got it.
Yeah, yeah, so we weren't able to meet the requests from all of our teachers, even though we gave just about that number of adopt-a-classroom grants. Because 40% of the people said, this is the teacher I want to support, then that's, that's where the funds go.
Okay, thank you. Three more things. Night of the Stars, I mean, I loved, of course, seeing the students do their thing, but the other thing I wanted to mention was the support from the students who came, who weren't on the stage. I mean, you would have thought that somebody hit a golden buzzer, like Mr. Zwach said, every time, because they were cheering, had signs, and it was really great to see that.
Were you there on Friday or Saturday?
I was on Friday.
On Friday, yes. The, the student group was very engaged on, particularly on Friday. And it was, it was neat to see the way they supported each other.
For sure. Yeah, some of them brought flowers to their friends and stuff, so it was really neat to see. Just so I understand the grant cycle, because I did have a couple of friends I'm in choir with that are teachers in 742 that didn't know about these grants, so I was going to give them the information. In the fall, there's activities and academic grants, but then in the spring, it's just activities? Is that right?
In the spring, in, in the fall, there are unrestricted activities and academic grants. And what that means is we have the funds available, anybody can apply for them. In the spring, we allocate the restricted academic grants, and that is for the legacy funds. If somebody establishes a legacy fund and says, I want my money to go to, let's say, support, pardon? Yeah, to the science program. We can only accept grants for the science program. And that's where we get our scholar, we do our scholarship grants in the spring also. I guess because initially, LEAF started strictly as an activities support group, our, the fund size of our activities grant is considerably larger and produces considerably more grants each year than the, than the academic at this time. But, so, so that's why in the spring of the year, we don't really take academic grant requests, because we're giving the restricted grants.
Okay. He's an EL teacher, so he would probably fall under that academic, so that's what I was wondering.
Yes.
Okay, great.
It would be.
And then lastly, a special thank you to the Music Matters Fund. I don't love, of course, that we don't have a marching band in St. Cloud, but at the same time, that's wonderful. Thank you personally to Al for that as well, and Once Upon a Child. What I've talked about here on the board before, just to put a little bug in your ear for the committee, is we have such a robust choral community when it comes to cantabale, which used to be under SESU, and now it's under YCCM, and that goes all the way till 12th grade. My oldest son is in that, but my 16-year-old son just absolutely adores band, and that's his gig. And so he's always like, why don't we have the same thing but for band? And I've heard orchestra teachers say the same thing, whether it's just a summer program or whether it be during the year like YCCM is, but they're looking for more opportunities to utilize their skills rather than just being, you know, in the jazz band and the band at school. So that's just a little hint of what may be needed in the community.
This is the start of our Music Matters Fund today. We hope that as we, as the word gets out to the community, people who are strong supporters of a music program and understand the value of, of that in a comprehensive educational community, might want to be generous in supporting it and allow us to grow the fund more rapidly because, as it grows, obviously, we're able to provide greater and greater support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you guys.
One question and a comment, but what percent of donations, so total annual donations, goes back to the district in grants, or is, is paid back to the district or put into an endowment fund?
If I could go back to the, to the slide, I might be able to show that better, but we have either endowed fund gifts or flow-through gifts. And so if, if somebody gives a gift for, let's say, the Activities Participation Fund, that's a flow-through gift, 100% of that goes through to the activities program. It might sit in our operating fund for a year or more before it's all expended, but it all goes. And that would be the same with Pack Rat, Pack Cat. Diane, help me, because I, my mind is going to go, well, actually, I could look in here.
I guess first what I'm kind of getting at is what is, what, what, what percent of the overall is the operating expenditure for LEAF? Because it's mainly a volunteer organization.
Yes.
So it's a very, very low, it's in the high 90s, isn't it, that goes straight through?
Yes, there is a, and this might be, you might be asking, the Charities Review Council establishes a percentage that they say a nonprofit should be spending in program expenses. Program expenses are the grants that a foundation is set up to support, and it should be between 65 and 90%. Last year, ours was 83-point-some percent, went to program expenses to grants. Besides program expenses, you have fundraising expenses, which of course, you have to, there are some expenses with that, and then general management, which includes, which includes things like office rental and supplies for the office, and any salaries that there might be. We have one part-time, paid employee, it's the executive director. Other than that, we don't have any other direct expenses for the organization. So we really work to keep our expenses as low as possible so that we're able to support the program. the programs as, as highly as possible. But if somebody gives a, a gift that is dedicated for a particular project, whether it's, you know, like I said, the Activities Participation or PAC RAT, PAC CAT, et cetera, 100% of that goes to that program. If it's, if it goes into the general endowment, which is technically an agency fund, and we can use those monies to pay some of our expenses. Obviously, we anticipate that we will make investment returns of 5% or more each year, because that more than pays for our, our expenses and allows the agency funds to continue to grow. Since 2008, when we started doing legacy funds, the, the return on our investments has been tremendous. As most of you who hold 401 or retirement accounts know, this past year hasn't been a very good year for us. So it hasn't been good for anybody. But, but we believe that over time, those funds will, will return at least 5%, and that's how we came up with our grant amount of 5% on our endowed funds to programs in District 742.
Yeah, and hopefully you would, they would grow at a rate greater than that, so the endowed fund continues to grow.
Yes.
I, I always look at these things, you know, how old is LEAF now? LEAF's like?
Well, 30 years this year, actually.
Is it 30?
1993 is when we, when we began.
So is Once Upon a Child.
Really?
30. Started in 1993. The, the one thing that I, that I like about these funds is that as they grow, they're like a retirement account. When you first start investing in them, you kinda look at it and it's like, this isn't worth anything. Is this thing ever gonna grow into anything? But then after years and years of, of investment into them, all of a sudden, you have this big pile of money. And they, they tend to grow kinda like that. So it's, you don't see that growth in the early years, but you see it much more in the later years. And these things are just gonna continue to grow and grow and grow. And when you show that chart, you know, where's it gonna be in 10 years? Another 10 years? And, and it's gonna be in a much stronger position, hopefully. I mean, hopefully, the stock market doesn't just completely fall apart, but.
Yeah, if, if, you know, the, the stock market lost 19% this year, if it had been a normal year of 5% growth with the donations that we were able to get this year, we still paid out $256,000, but we would be pushing $3 million now in our endowed fund. And by the way, we started LEAF with a $100,000 loan from the school district back in 1993. Now, that was totally paid back, but it's grown from that, and we've given 2.7 million and now have a little over $2 million endowed fund. The academic fund started with a $100 gift in 2009, and now it's at $776,000.
I would just also like to mention that we did do a strategic planning process this past year, and some pretty good goals have come out of that. We had, we had our executive board and a lot of the board members participate, and we had an outside facilitator, and we had community members participate as well. And so we're feeling pretty good about the goals that came out of that. And of course, some of those are procedural and more related to how, but certainly, we have targets related to what you're talking about.
Thank you, guys, both. It was great seeing you, and this is wonderful to hear. So thanks for all that you do and making an impact. So we appreciate it.
And you keep up the great work also.
Thanks. Okay, next up, we have the 2023 to 2026 Achievement and Integration Goals. This is just a discussion item tonight, and I think it's back next board meeting, is that correct, for an action item? So we have Ayan Omar, Director of Equity Services, presenting tonight.
Good evening, Chair Haas, Superintendent Putnam, and members of the school board. The goal for my presentation is to present the, the goals for the 2023 to 2026 Achievement and Integration Plan. Just to give you a quick overview, our Achievement and Integration Plan will directly influence our strategic focus area two, an instruction that produces positive outcome. The ultimate goal through the Achievement and Integration Plan is to eliminate barriers to learning among a racially, culturally, and linguistically diverse population, and to ensure all instruction and programming is culturally relevant and engaging. As mandated by MDE, the overall goal of the A&amp;I Plan is to reduce the disparities in academic achievement among all students, increase racial and economic integration, and provide equitable access to effective and more diverse teachers among all students. For the 2023 to 2026, under the achievement, we have two goals. We will, we will stick with the graduation rates for students who identify as Black, Hispanic, American Indian, or two or more races, to reach 85% by 2026. And for the first time, we added a second goal, which is to increase third-grade reading MCA from 32.6% to 50%. In our integration goal, we will increase the representation of AP honors concurrent to match the representation of our overall school-level enrollment. Some of the strategies among a lot more that you do not see here, that you will see in the formal written A&amp;I Plan, some of the strategies we will use to influence the three goals, the Achievement and the Integration Plan include professional development in letters, which focuses on the science of reading, including more positions such as our educational equity outreach coordinators, our family advocates, and our family access and cultural liaison. We will continue with our Young Scholars efforts, and near and dear to my heart is the Early Childhood Literacy in the Community projects that we've been doing. We have our third event coming up this Saturday at Corey View, partnering with Early Childhood Education. And our third district-wide goal is access to diverse teachers. We will remain, our goal will stay at the 8%, so to create and retain a racially diverse teacher workforce so that students and their communities are reflected in the classroom, we will increase from 6.3% teachers of color to 8% by May 2026. Going into the next three years, we will have Lincoln as our only racially identified school. With that, we are to recreate, we are to create three goals under Achievement, Integration, and Access to Diverse Teachers. For Lincoln, we will focus on MCA reading, and the goal is to go from 16.7%, and that reflects the change, fourth, fifth graders in 2022 to 36.0% in 2026. The integration really focusing on our, on the culture and the climate at Lincoln, that 100% of families new to Lincoln will be supported with welcome meetings during their transition and weekly SEL team connections thereafter. And finally, to focus on the access to diverse teachers, the goal, after talking to Principal Ebner, the goal for Lincoln is we will remain or increase from three teachers of color, teacher of color in 2026. With that, I'd like to just make, thank the cabinet team. The planning for these goals started in October, really took an intentional, purposeful approach to creating these goals, and, and in turn, I'd like to also lean on them in answering your questions.
Okay. Scott?
I noticed that there's lots of things going on in the legislature regarding your area of expertise. One of them is, seems to be an increase in the teachers of color. How are they, it sounds like they're gonna give some money for this. How are you gonna go about using it?
That would be a great question, and I'm gonna lean on Tracy or Dr. Putnam to support me in that. I could tell you that our affinity groups are going very well in supporting and in retaining our teachers of color. The number and the turnout seems to be going well.
I attended one of your affinity meetings, and it was very interesting, particularly when you were looking at the advantages and disadvantages of colored and non-colored folks. Remember walking toward the center of the room there, and we get a lot of advantages on our side. And do you know anything about money?
We are not counting our chickens. Well, we'll hope, but we're not, hope is not a strategy, so when, when we see the money.
Okay, that's it.
Al, Scott. And then Natalie.
I know it's statistical, but Talahi was racially isolated and is now not racially isolated. How did that occur? It's a statistical thing, and Lincoln, we were doing Talahi, and it seems to me that if one school is racially isolated, the other school should also really follow along the same lines. And will the grade reconfiguration in the schools, is that gonna have any effect in the, in the next year?
I do recall when we received that email last, last year, reading it with Dr. Revard and Amy. So I'm gonna lean on Dr. Revard and Amy to help me answer that question, but it is that 20% mark that Talahi no longer meets.
We suspect that some of the overall reduction in free and reduced applications due to meal being quicker has to do with that, because the way it's calculated, if the percentage is higher, the percentage of the district has a whole amount of COVID. We kind of, and it seems like they may be better with even qualified by a half a percent or so. It could be that, that those schools will be, based on your free and reduced percentage of, or the determination are today. So that could ever change come next fall.
So Al, what I would add to that, I know it was a little difficult to hear Amy. It was a small percentages that made the difference. It was a half of percent to 1% that we saw a change.
Is that, it's not economically calculated at all, is it? She said, she mentioned free and reduced lunch, and I didn't, you were, you were raking up quite a bit, Amy, so I couldn't really hear how that would affect the calculations.
It's the percentage of students, but I think we can pull those numbers for you, Al, if you want. We could go over them directly.
Yeah, it's, I'm just, I'm curious about that. The, so I'll, I'll leave that where it is there. On the very first slide.
Oh, I'm sorry, should I make it bigger? There we go.
Okay, objective number 2.1, eliminate barriers to learning among a racially, culturally, and linguistically diverse population. I'm wondering, and I'm sure it was left out on purpose, but why is there no reference there? Everything that I've always understood about education and differences in students falls along, it very much falls along high poverty areas. I mean, you could have a, you could have a 100% white school district, and you're gonna have certain kids who are not going to perform. So it isn't a racial, cultural thing, it's, it's 100% an economic thing. And I'm wondering why we left that out of the overall goal. Are you?
Backward.
Yeah. I mean, eliminate barriers to learning among a racially, culturally, and linguistic, linguistically diverse population, but it's also a very economically diverse population within our district. And I'm wondering why that was, and like I said, I have, I have to believe it was purposefully left out. Why was that purposefully left out?
If it's okay, I'll jump in, because this is directly off our strategic plan.
Okay.
So this is what we have been working with for the last three or four years, and I think it's something that it's, you know, we'd be glad to reconsider. I think it's a yes and, right? Yes, absolutely, socioeconomic status plays a huge factor, and I wouldn't even, you know, I wouldn't want to rank order, right? Rank order barriers, barriers are barriers. I think we also know that those are an addition, right? An addition on to. So that's why I think it's a yes and, but we'd be happy to take a look at that, and it probably makes sense, Al, for us to look at that, about putting that into our strategic plan.
And the strategic plan, was it addressed in another?
No.
Area, no?
I think we just missed, didn't put it in.
Okay. So somewhere it was, I mean, again, I think it was intentional, so I just, but I don't know, I wasn't, I wasn't involved directly in that process, so.
You know, it could have been, if I had to guess, right? Because I don't recall, right? Way back when we were, I can picture where we were, but when we look at the initiatives A and B, those are tied to either mostly co-teaching, right? Which is relative to our EL students, our English learners, so tied to that linguistic piece. And then the culturally relevant and engaging, well, certainly can be for everybody, right? We know that we had to make special effort to ensure that our materials were, and our instruction was racially and culturally relevant. So I, my guess is that it was tied to those, and we just didn't include that.
Thanks for your work on this, Ayan. This is something I've been thinking about, and maybe it doesn't have a great answer, but if you go to the Lincoln goals and you see the 16.7% in '22 to 36% in '26, we're not really looking at the same kids, right? Because it's gonna be K2, and then those kids are gonna be at Talahi. Okay. Sometimes that just seems problematic to me. I don't know what to do about it, but like, you know what I mean by that? Like, it doesn't seem like it compares apples to apples necessarily, but.
And I'll, I'll turn to Donna. I did ask that same question.
Oh, really?
And she said she pulled just the fourth and fifth grade, right, Donna?
And what we will do with that particular goal is we will monitor the current written fourth grade, fifth grade. So we have the.
Donna, it's okay. Donna, we'll follow up with the board. We, we just can't hear, so I had already emailed Ryan, or texted Ryan, and said, we have to solve this. So my apologies, everybody, we will be on this and find a way either to fix this, or we'll be here in person.
There we go.
Well, and I don't think it's really even just this one goal, right? But in general, a lot of our goals surrounding achievement are saying this grade to this grade, but not necessarily this child to this child. And so that was, you know, like if someone, and we all know this, but if someone comes in, in second grade from another district, and then it's that, you know, is it showing ability over time versus that snapshot? No one has to have any answers, because that's the age-old question, but thank you, Ayan. And no one has to have any answers because that's the age-old question, but thank you, Ayan.
I think those are two different approaches. One is to, how do we play catch-up? And the other one is, how do we, how do we succeed from out of the gate, from at a younger age?
Excuse my ignorance a little bit, but I mean, 16.7% is obviously alarming. How much of that is language barrier? And how do you even account for that? To talk about, I mean, if, and does the Somali language program provide any sort of support to address how we look at that percentage? And again, I just don't know how we look at that, but.
We are thinking differently. We are looking at it and looking at the strategies. What could we do differently for our students? We all agree that that's a number, but I am excited of the strategies that we're putting in place, especially our family advocates, as well as our EOCs, family engagement, family partnership, community partnerships as well, to help support and really make that look better.
But that does include our EL students. That's 16% over our full population of our students. So in that snapshot, so yes, a fair portion of those are EL. And well, of course, you know, if you're still learning English language and you're given a test in English, what do you think is going to happen? And why are we even doing it, but we have to.
And what does the research say then about preschool access? And what sort of impact that has with some of the growth of our preschool populations?
I would say, Heather, that has an immense impact. Just some of the data that impacted our team when we were putting this together, and I can probably shed a little light on Al's question. Heather, to your question, 33% to 34% of the children at Lincoln are receiving EL services. That's last year's data, but that's the data that we're utilizing when we were putting the plan together. 22% are receiving special education services. Now, those services could be for multiple different disability areas. And about 86% to 87% of our students at Lincoln Elementary are eligible for free and reduced lunch. Again, not necessarily a determinant of a student who may or may not struggle with reading or math. To Al's question, the difference is pretty small. 82.7% of the students at Lincoln would be students who would be a student of color, if you want to utilize that vernacular, versus Talahi, it's 80.3. And at Discovery, it's 80.7. So four tenths of a point there. So all those things impacted when Donna and Amy were helping us making those determinations of why the state identified certain schools as racially isolated. It was getting down to anywhere between four tenths of a point to maybe one point, forgive my math, one and a half percentage points. So could that change in reconfiguring the schools impact that? It certainly could. But does that help?
Monica, then Natalie.
What does the impact, the real impact into the schools that we are not classified with for Talahi anymore?
So the question of the services and the things that we're adding, and those would be some of the things that we were talking about, that the racially identified schools would be getting that Ayan had illustrated. And I don't know if you want to highlight those again.
So Lincoln is a racially identified schools, which means our strategies that we've outlined would apply to Lincoln. Not that we wouldn't extend it to the other schools, but in our A&amp;I, when we talk about budgeting and strategies, Lincoln is one of the schools that we would target.
Yes, that makes sense. As you said, the other schools, I mean, with whatever point is that difference, you're going to apply that in other schools as well. That's what I'm expecting. So what I'm asking is, what is the impact of not being classified by the state on that? That we're getting, that we're not getting the money to pay it? Or what was the real impact of that?
And I wish Amy could jump in a little bit on this because my understanding is the money doesn't necessarily change significantly in terms of what we're getting, we're having, because we're on a three-year plan. But Ayan, I'll turn to you because that part I am not an expert in.
See, I'm hoping Amy's texting me, but yeah.
She said it does not change the funding at all.
It doesn't. Yeah. Doesn't, we would.
Natalie? Oh, sorry.
I'm still not getting it. So what's the impact? There is not changing money, there is not changing programming, so there is no impact? So why do we want to be classified or not?
Amy is here. Could you just pop down, Amy, would that be okay?
Just gonna, just gonna run down here. What I understand, it doesn't meet the 20% mark to be classified as a racially identified school. That's the only difference that I see. But Amy might have more money, language to offer. Yeah.
Well, she's coming down. I just wanted to jump in and say that when we look at MCA scores year after year, and it does break it down into free and reduced and non-free and reduced, there's no denying that that's an impact and that's a barrier that does exist for multiple different possibilities of reasons. So I would support too, in our goals, if we could just identify the fact that we should include in our strategic plan to remember and be mindful of what barriers do exist in our students with that impact in their life. Did you want to jump in? Sorry. Well, I don't know. And Al, what, were you commenting on?
Well, I don't know if I, if I know enough about what I'm talking about to talk. But it seems to me like there was racially identified schools and then there's racially identified districts. And racially identified districts are eligible for funding. That has to do with the whole integration and equity program and having a director and things like that. But we'll let Amy talk, she might know.
There we go. So the racially identifiable schools does not change the funding at all. The state, because it's based on a per pupil funding, it's actually based on overall, it's a set amount per student based on our overall ADM, and then there's a factor for your percentage of students of color. So there's a whole ratio. In theory, the state, when we do the budget, does ask you to differentiate within the budget, the funds and the portion that you're spending on the racially identifiable schools versus the rest of the district. And so some districts may use that as a guide in terms of where they allocate their resources and they might allocate more resources to those schools. Based on the fact that we suspect that those schools barely didn't qualify, we're not changing really anything substantially in terms of how we're allocating the funds between schools. And so it will report differently to the state. And they'll expect us to do those goals and report back on the progress just for the one school. But we are not having it significantly change or dictate what we're doing within the budget for the actual overall A&amp;I plan.
And that's from, you're talking, we're not changing from what we did last year. But we don't allocate equally amongst all schools in the district.
Correct. We typically allocated additional funds to those schools and we're going to continue to allocate those same amounts of funds to all of those schools like we have in the past, even though they're not actually identified. Because again, we suspect that they likely will be when they rerun those numbers.
So the, so again, what's the matter of the location that they identify them? That doesn't really matter, it's just for the information?
They just expect you to then formulate goals and report back on the progress on those goals for those schools. So it's really more of a plan, an impact on the plan and the reporting and that sort of requirement has more impact on that than it does on the budget or the funding or anything like that.
So unity. And this is just a general comment, it's not really anything specifically to you, Ayan. But I will hear that we, as a school board gloss over things like 16% and we're talking about it right now. But one thing that is said and that I do agree with is that sometimes we put too much, not sometimes. There are people, many people, that put too much onus on the EL community when it comes to our low percentages. And I don't think that's fair to the EL community. I don't think it's fair to, not even fair, but just like, the reality is, these are a few things. That EL isn't just Somali. You know, we have 40%, 40-plus languages spoken in 742, so it's a great many, it's a plethora of wonderfulness in our EL classrooms. But it's not just EL that's the issue, it's also kids of color. And when you look at this achievement and integration plan, what this, I think, is a lot about is historically underserved communities. You know, again, I think I said this the last time, but we talked about something like this. We, yes, today is today, but also let us look at the history of our nation, of who was even allowed to go to school with white kids, you know, in the 60s, finally, you know? So we're really not very far away from a majority of our students not even having the same access to education if they would have been born when my parents or my grandparents were born, or back, even back further. So that's, when we're talking about this plan and when we see that in the Achievement and Integration and Equity Committee, and when we're talking about that, I just want to always bring us back to the fact that, yes, I mean, poverty for sure is another one, so is LGBTQ+. So are many, many different barriers. But this really, I think, is going at the fact of specifically folks of color who have not had the same, not have, not had equitable or even equal access for much of this country's history. So I just want to remind us of that and keep us grounded in the reality of what that has done to families and to our neighbors.
Only thing I wanted to add, and I don't need to take us off track. But if anybody has not yet had time to read the NPR article about how schools that are underfunded, please take a look, right? Because this isn't even just, I don't want to even solely keep this about our kids and who our kids identify as and how they show up, right? We are the most underfunded district, according to the data in this NPR article, in the entire state, right? We do not have the funds that other districts have to support our kids, no matter what they look like or where they come from. And we are doing our very best and we're doing a good job. But it's not even about who we have, it's what we're getting.
Thanks. Okay, thank you. Then we're moving on to reports. We have the superintendent's report first, presented by Dr. Laurie Putnam.
Thank you, Chair Haas, members of the board, good evening. Those of you in the audience and listening from home, thank you for sticking with us. We wrapped up my final high school listening session for Try Two with Apollo, and that was a really great opportunity. We got, I just, it's amazing, the insights that our students give us. And it's been a real joy to be able to be with them. I do want to say that, though I believe it is out now on our website and social media, we are canceling the superintendent's virtual drop-in for tomorrow evening. We only had one registrant, and so we have contacted that person. And so that virtual idea, the idea of a virtual hangout didn't work. So we'll, I'll probably reschedule that one for during the day because we get great attendance during the day. So if anybody was listening, please know that that's why. I know that we heard from our LEAF partners, but I do want to give a shout out to our very own Ryan Cox, who received an award on Monday from LEAF, yay, Ryan, for instructional excellence. He's looking down, not making eye contact. So congratulations to Ryan for that well-deserved award. And then I just also, you heard Meredith reference it, but I wanted to just share that we have had really great turnout in terms of enrollment for our kindergarten. And thanks to Mike and the team, Donna and her team, who are doing a lot of hard work to make sure we're getting the information out. But we already have sections at Clearview, Westwood, Madison, and Discovery for Chinese, Spanish, and Somali. We're still working on getting enough enrollment at Talahi, but we're very excited to be this early, already having enough for full sections at those schools and already heading toward two at a few of them. And then our Central Minnesota Virtual Academy is also seeing some, for our first year, really great numbers. We see mostly supplemental enrollments at the high school, but certainly enough that we're going to get some of those classes up off the ground. And we've recently kicked off our middle school registration for Central Minnesota Virtual Academy. We've grabbed a couple so far already this week. We've got a couple of students from our homeschool and a couple of students from charters from other districts. So really exciting to see that the way that that's taking off. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And then we have the Board of Education Standing Committee reports. We have Board Development Policy and Governance Committees. Scott, Adressen, do you have a report from, what's that? Not yet? Okay. Then Board Finance and Audit Committee, Chair Aldawud.
Yep, we met on February 10th at 8:30. The first thing on the agenda was the Oak Hill and Discovery HVAC change orders. And we, those were in the consent agenda tonight. We did approve those. They were fairly large and I thought I might as well go through some of this just so that people understand why. Change order number one for each project was the purchase of switchboard panel boards. The original budget included approximately $98,000 for each one of those. We've made revisions to the existing boards at a cost of about half of what the new boards would have costed. And so what we actually have done was much cheaper than the original plan for those. Change order number two was for LED lighting. And when the bids were requested, they included alternate bids for LED lighting to be installed in the schools. The bids for LED lighting were rejected at the time of the bid award because we needed to wait to see if all of the other LTFM project bids came in within or under budget before committing to moving forward with the LED lighting portion of it. Since the other projects have come in under budget, we are now, as a change order, adding the LED lighting work to those projects. So you're going to see LED lighting, and that was the majority of the large change orders that you saw. And then change order three was credits due to change orders made in the airflow system. And these will be coming at a later date, but they'll be reverse charges or money credited back. The second item on the agenda was a discussion about an Apollo scoreboard. The turf and track and site bids for the Apollo Stadium project have come in under budget by approximately $250,000. This money can be used for a new scoreboard. We're currently looking at scoreboard options as well as possible sponsorships that can make up the gap between the cost of the scoreboard and the funds available, which is approximately $125,000. Any shortfall in funding not covered by sponsorships would be covered by reductions in future budget allocations for Apollo. The committee recommends getting a scoreboard the same size as Tex's so that there wouldn't be any difference between the two schools. We wouldn't have a big one at one school and a smaller one at the other school. And this will come to the school board in March, on March 1st for approval. And the school is very confident. And they've already had a lot of initial discussions with businesses in the area about sponsorships for the scoreboard. And they are very, very, very confident that they will get the money to fund that gap. And so we feel fairly confident moving forward. And if for some reason they would fall They would fall a very small amount short, and that would be, that would come out of their activities funding for the next, it depends on the exact amount, but for the next year, two years, five years, an amount would be deducted from that to pay for it. The last thing was the Apollo referendum update. Amy stated that the construction manager proposals for a potential future Apollo referendum were received on February 9th. She needs time to review the proposals to make sure that they're comparable. She noted that the contracts for professional services do not require formal bid process, and the district doesn't have to take the lowest bid, but can also take into consideration the company's history and experience. JLG will be the architectural firm for the project. So after reviewing them all, that was the one that everyone felt the most comfortable with. There was some bids from some companies that were smaller or had not done, if this happens, it's a very large remodeling project, multi-year remodeling project. And there were some bids from firms that have not been involved in something that expansive, and that can be a problem. It's better to go sometimes with somebody that has the experience. So that was our meeting from February 10th.
Natalie?
I have a further question, Al, about the Apollo scoreboard and about the funding for that. It concerns me to hear that the Apollo Activities Fund may be lessened in order to get a scoreboard, because there's more than just, you know, sports that are in that fund. And that doesn't seem equitable to Tech, because, you know, Tech had it, at least what I think, they had it paid for by the referendum. And we're already so underfunded in activities that, as a mother of children at Apollo, that concerns me.
It's actually very equitable to Tech, because Tech didn't have theirs completely funded. They chose a more expensive scoreboard and said that they would pay for that out of the school funds. And it was out of the operating funds, the school operating funds, not the, okay, the general budget for the school and not just the Activities Fund.
That's how it would be for Apollo, too?
Yes, that's what it is for Apollo.
So not just the Activities Fund, is what you're saying?
Correct. And it wouldn't really be significant amounts. And they're confident that it'll be zero, so.
Okay. I was just concerned, because I thought I heard you say Activities Fund, and I know we're already low on that, so thank you for that clarification.
You'd say Activities Fund.
Thank you, Lori.
But I was wrong.
Mark it down, Al. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Do you know if we have somebody reaching out to Tech or crossing and saying, hey, you invested in this, would you do the exact same thing? I appreciate the size, but is there something different that we learned that we should have done or that we liked or didn't like? And if we're going to make this large purchase, not to just duplicate it, but duplicate it if we loved 100% of it, but is there something maybe different? Like to go with a different name because of different software, or why'd you put it over here or something?
You're saying the scoreboard that's at Tech?
Yeah. Is somebody checking with them before we invest at Apollo and say?
Yeah, and there's really two firms that you can use for a scoreboard. And I think there is some advantages to using the same one at both, because you do get crossover people using both, and they don't have to know two different systems. But I think they're pretty happy with the one at Tech, but yes, that work has been done.
Okay, last up is future agenda items. The March Board Meeting and Work Session topics will, yep, oh, I'm sorry, and I was even at your meeting. I'm just ready to call this a night. One more committee report. We have Personnel Negotiations Committee, Chair Monica Segur-Schwarz.
Right, so I have a short report, so no worries, you can go on with your night. So we had a meeting on February 13, last Monday. So we just had an update on strategic alignment of district leadership for 2023-24. That was a discussion for the, or not discussion, it was an update. We also had an update in administrative positions and search process for 2023-24. And we talk about dual immersion program hiring. So how do we do that? So any questions or anything, just let us know. Thank you.
That's good.
I believe that the MSBA program for school board members for negotiations, not only is it online, but it's going to be in person here on Friday, if anybody's interested. I think we have to pay for it. We may even have to pay a couple dollars extra for walk-in, but I'm going.
So that's not part of my report, so I'm done.
All right, last up then, one more time here. Future agenda items. So March Board Meeting and Work Session topics will include the American Indian Education Update and American Indian Advisory Committee Compliance Documentation. We have then our official vote on the 2023-2026 Achievement and Integration Goals that we heard tonight. We have annual staffing timelines, school updates, and policy readings. Does any board member want to suggest a future agenda item? Natalie?
So I'm wanting to talk about this, and I don't know where it should be talked about first, if it's in committee, and maybe we've already talked about it. But when one of the moms talked tonight about the activity bus for high school, I'm hearing a lot more students that are having that issue, that are having the issue of no activity bus at high school being a barrier to them being able to participate. So wondering if we could look into that, and maybe we already have, but it just seems like one of the barriers for stuff, and we're trying to bring down barriers, so I would love to tackle that if possible.
Maybe understand where we're at right now with it, because it's probably moving.
Yeah, we'd be glad to do that. Do you want it to come to committee first? Do you want it to come to the full board? What's your hope?
I don't know if there's a good committee to come to, but it's also equity.
One is just the answer as to where are we right now with it? Because it's been this and it's been this. And then when we understand that, to say, do we want to have a board discussion about it?
I would like to ask, what would be the expected outcome of a board discussion? Because I don't think anyone, I mean, we could have a board discussion about it, but is anyone going to argue against activity buses? And if we're not going to argue against activity buses, then it seems to me like it would be something we would ask our operations people to do, or our staff, is that, just to let you know, it's a concern of the board, and could you please come back with a report on what we're doing and what our plans are for the coming year?
That's exactly what I'm looking for. Thank you.
Thanks. Monica?
So just one or two, I mean, when you were suggesting to have a presentation, I mean, we don't need to argue. It could be a presentation of where we are at. That's not how you said that that was the topic, but if that is, if that's what you're asking, I like that. And I'm not sure what you're asking, actually, but if what you're asking is a presentation about where we at, that I will echo that desire for a presentation to the board about where we are, how does that work? Like, an informative presentation, I'm not suggesting that we discuss, but I'd like to know more about it, so.
Yeah, I don't know the reason, I'm sorry. I don't know the reason why we don't have one. I'm guessing it's money-related, but the goal is to have activity buses, if I could say my personal goal, and how can we fund it? What are other schools doing? I know we don't have as much money as other schools, but basically, how can we decrease the barriers for our wonderful high school students? Thank you.
I had a question about this. You handed it all out, we're supposed to be voting on something that I've...
It's optional to vote. If you want to vote, vote and put it in this folder.
Well, first, tell us about who Resource Training Solutions are.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, you told me.
Yeah. It just came to the board, it's not part of the board meeting, and it was just...
Not driven by Shannon, it's driven by Resource Solutions.
I'm really puzzled, there's no place for a write-in on it or anything.
Yeah, go ahead and write yourself in, because Al did.
I'll try it. Find out what it's all about.
I'll change mine, if you'd like to vote, too. Okay.
You can write them a letter, or just tell them that you don't like getting stuff put in front of you, and you don't know what it is either.
Yeah, that's fair. All right, well, meeting is adjourned. It is 9:24 PM. Thank you for watching, and we'll be back May 1st, March 1st. Thank you.